Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 3rd. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman and Deb Shore. On my right, Commissioner Roma Amundson, Vice Chair Bill Avery is running late and he should be joining us momentarily. From the County Attorney's Office, we have Mr. David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the Clerk Dan Nolte, Kelly Lundgren. And then from the County Board Office, we have the Chief Administrative Officer Carrie Egan and the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer Ann Ames. Now if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to defy of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.ned.gov. Agenda item one or minutes. One A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 26, 2017.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, September 26th. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. One B is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' public hearing regarding the Lancaster County Board of Equalization Property Valuation Protest Process held on Tuesday, September 26, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' public hearing regarding the Board of Equalization Property Valuation Protest Process held last Tuesday, September 26th. Any discussion or correction? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through October 3rd, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through October 3rd. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number three, special presentations. Three A is the Commissioners' Award of Excellence, September winner, Doug Land Olsen, County Engineering in the Category of Productivity. And I have the nomination here, I'll go ahead and read. Douglas Land Olsen has been selected as the Commissioners' Award of Excellence winner for September 2017. Douglas works as an engineering technician too and began working for the county on September 5th, 1984. He was nominated by Scott Robinson, retired GIS records assistant in the category of productivity. In his nomination, Mr. Robinson states, "It is my pleasure to recommend Mr. Douglas Land Olsen for the Lancaster County Commissioners' Award of Excellence. I've known Doug for nearly thirty years and he has been a consistent employee who has excelled in every aspect of his work ever since I've known him. Not only is he knowledgeable with regard to his own position and skills, he has willingly shared that knowledge with a variety of employees and general public in cheerful and cooperative fashion for the entire length of time that I've known him. Doug is not only competent at his work, but a wonderful staff member who represents the county engineering office in a professional manner. During my tenure with the county as a GIS records assistant, Doug has provided the depth of knowledge, skill, and ability that has lent itself to the success of the LCED GIS land base that continues to provide a detailed and highly accurate land base record of land division for Lancaster County. His ability to research and provide data and land assistance when needed has contributed to the success of the GIS division. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Douglas Land Olsen with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month, September 2017."
Pam Damon, Lancaster County Engineer, and I had Ken come up with me too because Ken has worked with Doug for all of his tenure nearly, I guess, right?
Twenty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years of history.
I get four more than he does.
And see, there's where I deal with the surveyor thing, that we have to be accurate within a hundredth of any decimal point. So what I would like to say is Doug is extraordinarily helpful, whether it's someone calling in with questions about our surveyed land, or whether somebody drops by and has questions about their legal documents that are on file with their land. And so I'm very thankful to have him as a staff member. He is always there and always on, and so I appreciate that. And Ken, did you want to say a few words?
I've worked with Doug for twenty-nine years. His understanding of our system and records and ability to help the public and get them to where they need to go to get information if it isn't in our office is commendable. He's a model employee, a great asset to our office.
Great. Wonderful.
Doug, on behalf of the Commissioners, I want to congratulate you on this award and thank you for your work for the county. I know that maintaining an interest and positive attitude in a job over many years is something that we don't always have a chance to acknowledge. So we thank you for your work. And if you have anything to say, thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank everybody for this. I'm one of the lucky people that for thirty-three years have a good job that I look forward to going to every day, and not everybody's that lucky. And I've worked around a lot of good people that have helped me get to that point, too. So many thanks to my bosses and my coworkers also. So thank you.
Next is three B, introduction of Susan Madsen, perspective appointee to the Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee, Jeff Mullin, Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director.
Good morning. Very excited today to introduce to you Susan Madsen, who is a good friend of the tourism industry. And we're very excited to bring in front of you today the opportunity to appoint Susan Madsen to the Visitors Promotion Committee. At our August meeting, her name kept coming up over and over and over again as somebody that would fill an open seat that we have on the VPC. And the term that we are looking at is July 1st of 2017 through July 31st of 2021. And the VPC is a seven-member committee, as you all are very well aware of, that makes some very key and critical decisions in expenditure of lodging tax income in Lancaster County. And I'm very excited today to bring forth Susan. Her experience in the industry, not only in Omaha and Kansas City and Minneapolis, is something that we respect and we honor, but what she's been able to do at the Cornhusker has been amazing for the community. That hotel's gone through an amazing transformation. It remains a pillar to hospitality in downtown Lincoln, and so we're very excited to have her here today. And we sat down a couple weeks ago and we talked about the opportunity, and she kind of looked at me and said, "Visitors Promotion Committee." And I looked at her concerned going, "Do you have a concern?" And she reminded me that she came from Douglas County, and she's seen a lot of different things as to how visitors' promotion committees operate. And I assured her that thanks to the work of Carrie Egan and the County Board and the VPC, that we have a gold standard across the state of Nebraska when it comes to visitors' promotion committees. So I think that eased her mind. So with that, I introduce to you Susan Madsen.
Thank you. I'm excited for the opportunity ahead of me. I did attend several VPC committee meetings in Douglas County over the years and look forward to participating on yours. I've heard a lot of great things about Lancaster County's VPC committee and the structure around these grants, if you will. So thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you.
And I've had the pleasure of actually watching Susan in action back when I worked in the Cornhusker and saw firsthand how her work and her leadership transformed that property. There are a lot of new and innovative programs over there, including the Artists in Residence or wherever, I forget what you call it.
Artists in Residence.
Okay. I remembered. And so it was, yeah, it was, I'm very happy. And I remember several years ago, we actually had a conversation and I, we talked about the visitors' promotion committee and we talked about her hesitation. So I'm glad that we were able to overcome your hesitancy. So, and we look forward to working with you.
Love Lincoln, love being here.
If you could, really quick, the bees, the honeybees, and I want to hear about the honeybees really quick and then Project Search, if you could, brag a little bit.
Sure. We have four beehives on the roof of the Marriott Hotel now. We got them in May, and we're ready to insulate them for the winter, and then they, by next summer, will produce up to 600 pounds of honey that we'll use in the hotel. In our pastry kitchen, we have three pastry chefs. So we're excited for our honeybees, and we're just now creating our label and naming our honey and our bees. So we'll have honey for sale in the gift shop. And then we just started our first Project Search class for developmentally disabled students in their last year of high school that will transition from school to work and will teach them independent living, riding a bus, counting change, everything, how to be a work adult, young adults, and get them out of the system, from the school system into work. So we have seven students from three school districts and look forward to doing that again. I had that in Embassy Suites in Omaha, and I'm excited to work where you have Norris and Creed and Waverly Schools and Wilbur. So it's great to bring these kids in from rural school districts and get them to work in the city.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, I remember that the article about the honeybees, and I just wanted to let you know that I am a beekeeper also.
Yes.
And, yeah, and you may need to have some splits going on. You may well end up from four beehives all the way up to eight and 10 in the future. So you will have a lot of honey, I think. Yeah.
Well, I give tours several times a week. If I see kids in the elevator with their parents, I say, "You want to go see the bees on the roof?" And take them up and show them the Capitol and Memorial Stadium and talk about the bees. So anytime you're in the hotel, I'll take you up on the roof.
Okay. Might take you up.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, can we see the correlating item, please?
This is five A, under New Business, appointment of Susan Madsen to the Lancaster County Visitors Improvement Committee for a term commenced in July 1st, 2017, and then in July 31st, 2021.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Susan Madsen to the Lancaster County Visitors Improvement Committee. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Next is number four, public hearing. Four A is a change of zone number 17025 from AG and I to B on properly legally described as Lot 16 IT located in the northeast quarter of Section 34, Township 9, Range 8, Lancaster County, Nebraska, generally located at the intersection of Highway 2 and Highway 43.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the change of zone number Anyone here to testify in support?
Can I go ahead and swear you guys in? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Do.
Okay, are you going to be speaking?
Well, if needed.
If asked.
Why do I go ahead and swear?
If there are questions that you need to answer.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chairman, members of the County Board, Mark Hunsaker appearing on behalf of Doug Derscheid, who is here with me. Doug has entered into an agreement with Casey's to acquire all the land at the intersection of Highway 43 and Highway 2, which is not currently being used by Casey's. It's a little bit unclear yet where those boundaries are going to be drawn based on to-be-determined usage of the existing lagoon and access and a few things like that. But the property is shown in the comprehensive plan as commercial, and the original application was to just change the remaining portion that was not already zoned industrial to industrial. The planning staff suggested that it would be better to rezone the entire parcel, commercial. The commercial district, as you know, permits a wide range of non-residential uses, just short of industrial. And the plan, I believe, is to develop the property for any or all of those uses. We have agreed to a conditional zoning agreement which restricts the access, to the existing access on Highway 43. There will likely be, need to be access coming off the road to the south, but that's a different matter. We have, I delivered today Doug's original signed agreement with the county on that matter, along with a copy of the signed agreement from Casey's. I was assured in an email yesterday that they were overnighting the original document to me, so I'll have that delivered to Dave yet today. So if you have any other, if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them for you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hunsaker?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to make it? Okay.
Well, like, as Mark said, I don't have a definite intended use yet, but obviously to comply with the Class B zoning and hopefully develop that area into something better than what is being used for today.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here to testify in support of this change of zone? Anyone in the audience testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Mr. Clerk, see the correlating item, please.
Okay. This will be, under New Business, five B is a resolution regarding county changes zone number 17025 from AG Agricultural to B Business and from I Industrial to B Business on property generally located Highway 2 and Highway 43 in Lancaster County.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding the change of zone, number 17025. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five C is a development and conditional zoning agreement among Doug Derscheid, Casey's retail company in Lancaster County related to CZ 17025 on land generally located at 10,200 South 158 Street, Lancaster County.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the development and conditional zoning agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four B is an amendment to the Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the amendment to the County General Assistance Guidelines.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I assume you're here to testify in support.
Sure. Or to answer any questions.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. I'm the Director of the Department, just to give an overview of what we changed in those guidelines. And first of all, let me say to you that the guidelines need to be changed every two years, and it's a process of going through. We have a review committee for that. The committee consists of a representative from the county board, somebody from our primary care provider, which is Health 360. We also have the Health Department represented on that, and then somebody from the County Attorney's Office, as well as general assistance staff. So going through the changes, just to give a summary, we really looked at the guidelines this year and tried to simplify some of our processes that we have in place for our clients to make it easier for them to navigate through our general assistance guidelines, our process. And so looking through, there are some of the changes that we're proposing is to change the number of days from currently 10 to 30 in which a client has to submit all of the supporting documentation and sign the application to our office, allowing them 20 more days than they originally had. We also are proposing that they be allowed to provide a copy of the application instead of the original. A lot of times, our clients have caseworkers who are helping them submit the application and they email it or fax it to our office, and trying to get that original has proven to be burdensome for some of our clients. Also, when we're looking at eligibility criteria, the vehicles allowance has always been an issue. We had it at 4,650, the total value of one vehicle. So what was happening was our clients were having a number of vehicles, and maybe some of those vehicles didn't run, but before they could get on general assistance, they had to get rid of the other vehicles. They could only have one in their family. Well, if you have a vehicle that doesn't have an engine in it, it can cost you money to get rid of the vehicle. And so we were having clients who were being excluded, who were needing assistance but not being able to get it because of that additional vehicle or vehicles that they had that weren't working. So we're proposing that, we don't care how many vehicles they have, the total just can't be over $6,000, which is in line with the Health and Human Services guidelines that they also have. We're also proposing currently the certification process that we have every six months is the client comes in and submits a whole new application to our office. We don't need that. We condensed it to a short form, so clients just come in and basically let us know of any changes that they've had, if they've moved, if their phone numbers changed, that kind of stuff, and then we update it in our system. We're also allowing a chance now for, we've had a number of especially females who have gone through the divorce proceeding, maybe in another state, and they have problems getting a copy of their divorce decree, but they can maybe provide us with other documentation that shows that they did go through a divorce, so we're allowing that additional documentation in lieu of having that divorce decree if they cannot get it. We've also increased our rent from 450 to 530 for a single person. That puts us in line with what HHS is also paying. We've increased, we're proposing to increase our personal needs that we provide them with. Their allowance, right now it's $20 a month for a single person, allowing them $25 a month. And then when we go through to, and we clarify different things within the guidelines, one of the things that we found that we probably needed clarification on was where we are at with providing primary care with our clients, primary medical care, and then behavioral health care. And we all believe in integrated health care, and I know we all believe in that, or we wouldn't have transitioned from Lincoln Lancaster Health Department for primary care to Health 360, which has behavioral health and primary care. However, with that being said, there is another system in place that has all of the network providers that we also have in GA. So where we have all of these contracts with orthopedic doctors, with cardiologists, with people to address primary care, the region has those same systems in place to address behavioral health. So it's a matter of making sure that our clients are not coming to us in order to be provided a service which we are not able to provide as well as another agency is. So clarifying that, making sure that we're working with providers and the region, I've had several meetings between the regions and the providers to ensure that if clients are needing medication, they're able to get it through avenues through that mechanism. And then just cleaning up some things in the guidelines, there were several grammatical errors that we went through, changing primary care from the Health Department over to, you will see reflected through the guidelines, Blue Stem Health, which is the new name for People's Health Center. We also clarified legal settlement in the guidelines. There were several times where we had individuals who had acquired legal settlement in another county who came to Lancaster County to seek medical services. And then when we tried to get reimbursement from that county, they sometimes used our own guidelines against us in a defense as to why not to pay us. So we worked with the County Attorney's Office. Mr. Durbin was able to outline in an attachment kind of different examples of what define legal settlement. And I will tell you, too, over the course of the last year, we've seen an increase of over 500% of revenue that we've been able to get reimbursed through other counties. So the system is working, and that's the system that we have, that we're proposing to outline here in these guidelines. We defined what a student is that previously was not defined, and Commissioner Brinkman had recommended that we also include private institution to that student definition. We have an agreement through Social Security Administration that we need to inform clients when we use their system to verify what they're telling us as far as their social security benefits. So we added that clause in our guidelines. There's a clause in there in reference to the jail using our healthcare services that we have our contracts in place. They have their own systems, their own contracts in place, they don't use general assistance. So it was a matter of clearing that up. And then a couple more, dental. We wanted to address really what the reason was for general assistance. Again, we provide primary medical care to clients, and so when we looked at what we were doing with dental, we wanted to make sure that our clients had a dental home in the community, that they weren't relying on us for all of their primary dental care needs because they're not going to be on general assistance for a long time. And so really defining that to make sure that it was an emergency medical condition that could impact their health. We increased the death certificate allowance from 11 to 16 to match the increase at the state level. The hospital clause, we omitted because the hospital does not release clients anymore with medication. They release clients instead with a prescription to get the medication, and we have a whole clause on that. And then lastly, we updated the poverty guidelines at the end to make them in line with what HHS has. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Wil? Yeah, she's done a lot of hard work, her staff, in revising these guidelines. We've talked about them at the GA Budget Monitoring Committee. There's other things that she's doing. In addition, there's new software that she's going to be implementing. So, yeah, she's done a lot, obviously. This is an extensive revision of our guidelines, and I think it benefits both the individuals and clients who receive services, but also to the taxpayers. It's also a benefit, so.
And I will add, too, that I know that when I started off, I said we were doing different things to streamline the process for clients, and while clients are always at the front of what I think about when I think about providing general assistance services, I also know that as the budget goes and it's taxpayer money, that we need to keep that in mind, too. Last year, our budget decreased by 25%. This year, we're under by about 10%. We've also seen the number of appeals. We've had one appeal in the last year, which usually there's been a lot more than that. In my time handling complaints, I've had no complaints in the last year from clients, which is unheard of, so.
Well, I also think it's important, and I briefed the board last week about the transition from the Health Department to Health 360, has been almost flawless.
There's been a couple, but we won't talk about those.
That's why I said almost.
Here.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Wil? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience here to testify in support of the amendment to the GA guidelines? Anyone to testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on the amendment for the Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines. Mr. Clerk, please see the correlating item.
Under New Business, five D is adoption of the revised Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
Move that we adopt the revised Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the revised Lancaster County, excuse me, General Assistance Guidelines. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five E is a resolution in matter of approving, A, an amendment to the master site lease among the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission as less C and the County and City of Lincoln, Nebraska jointly as lesser; B, an amendment to the master lease agreement among the county and the city jointly as less C and the commission as lesser; and C, the issuance of not to exceed $1,700,000 in principal amount of the commission's tax-supported lease rental revenue refunding bond, Series 2017.
Good morning. Scott Keane, Emeritus Investment Corp. The resolution before you this morning will allow the Public Building Commission to proceed with a refunding of their Series 2010 bonds that are currently outstanding in the amount of $1,965,000. Those bonds have a final maturity of October of 2030 and have an average outstanding rate of 3.83%. In today's market, we think we'll be able to do something more like 2.5% as an average rate with the refunding bonds, keep the same amortization schedule, not lengthen the amortization at all, and save approximately $13,000 per year. On a present value basis, that equates to, after paying all costs of issuance, about $148,000, which represents 7.5% of the outstanding bonds. The GFOA recognizes that a refunding like this that has savings of at least 4% would be considered as a refunding candidate, so clearly we exceed those guidelines. With your approval today, our plan is to proceed with With your approval today, our plan is to proceed with a sale of the bonds this Thursday, settling the issue on November 10th and having the old bonds redeemed on November 10th. We won't have both issues outstanding at the same time. Interest rates have risen a bit in the last week, so we're trying to move as quickly as we can to get to, to get to market. This is not a terribly large financing, but with your help, the Public Building Commission over the last 10 years has refunded four series of bonds with savings of over $5.5 million. So again, at $148,000 present value, this isn't, isn't a huge one, but we are saving the taxpayers' money, so it's valuable to consider.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Keen?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Resolution approving an amendment to the master site lease and an amendment to the master lease agreement and the issuance of additional money to 1.7 million in principal. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a special designated license application from Seward Grocery LLC doing business as Pack and Save for reception at Prairie Creek Inn at 2400 South 148 Street, Walton, on October 21st, 2017.
Good morning.
Hi, Gail Richards.
Emily Dober.
Do you have any?
We have nothing, we just came.
If you had any questions?
Nope. If you had questions, that would be.
Are there any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Shore?
Is this the first time that you've worked with Prairie Creek Inn?
No.
No, okay.
We've done several events for them.
Well, they've been with us a long time and very well-run organization, so I'm sure there will be no problems. And having said that, we'll move approval of the application. Second.
Second.
Emily, is there anything you want to say since you sat through the meeting and?
Nope.
Okay.
How large a group are you going to be serving?
This one is 150.
Okay.
Great. Well, you have a motion and a second to approve the special designated license application from Seward Grocery for reception at Prairie Creek Inn. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is adoption of the Lancaster County Legislative Priorities for the 2018 session of Nebraska Legislature. A copy of this is at the front of the hearing room.
I'm Carrie Egan, Administrator for the Board. I had comments from both Jennifer and Deb on some minor changes. I incorporated those. Jennifer's changes were in the first paragraph rather than, say, new revenue sources for counties include, or I added potential new revenue sources for counties could include just to soften it a little bit. I think that's a good addition. I've always, it tends to be a little bit too much of an advocate in my writing, so I sometimes need to be rounded around the edges. The other change was suggested by Deb, and that was in funding for juvenile justice reform. I had indicated that funding should be increased for the juvenile justice community aid program. Deb recalled that it was, the board said maintained. I would suggest maybe we should say should be maintained or increased, I think, just to hedge our bets a little bit on that one. That's what I recall the discussion was. A last comment, Jennifer had suggested adding something about the ability to keep fees, maintain just a power to raise fees as necessary. I recall the discussion being to simplify it with LB-81, which is a fee increase, which is on general file. So it's something that we could attain hopefully this next session. I had previously had language like that in the old version, but had deleted it to get it all on one page. It also would, I could fit it back in if that's the wishes of the board, or we could just go with the LB-81, which is our fee bill for this year, because we'll always be bringing back fee bills, whether it's marriage license increases, which we just had a small one, or other services that the fees have not been increased for years and certainly are inadequate, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Egan?
I, I guess the thought is, do we want to just specify the handgun fee increase or more general language that would allow us to have the power to increase fees modestly without having to go to the legislature every time, so that's the other side.
Yeah, the discussion was, first, that we can probably get LB-81 this year, being on general file, and that was Joe Cohoat's recommendation. We will be seeing him in a little bit, but that's up to the board. I could go back and rework the first paragraph, add some general language on fees, it'd probably take me a few minutes, but it's, it's up to the board.
What were the wishes of the board?
I'm fine with moving forward. As Carrie already suggested, I assume that if we want to amend these priorities at some point in the next several months, we can do so. We don't need to do it here today.
Yes, no restrictions on that.
Move approval. Second.
I guess my other question, should I, on funding for juvenile justice, should I add funding should be maintained or increased, or should I just leave it at maintained?
I would say maintained or increased.
I am good with that too.
Head nod from Sarah in the back, so.
Okay, well, I will get those, and I'll have a clean version to the clerk here in just a few minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Lancaster County Legislative Priorities for the 2018 legislative session. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5H is a letter of support from the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners for the South Beltway. A copy is at the front of the hearing room.
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Dingman?
Can I apologize for these comments not coming in a very timely manner. However, the paragraph that's after the bullet points in the letter, I have concerns that it may commit us to things like barricading or lighting, and I was just wondering if we could modify that paragraph to say that we will continue to cooperate with Department of Roads on the South Beltway project. As you may recall, we started off with an agreement for the South Beltway with the 26 exhibits, and then as we went on, they changed their agreement to what the County Attorney's Office and I felt should be a memo of understanding, because instead of all the words saying shall, they say may. And so there's another agreement forthcoming, and I don't want to do anything that would open us up to additional commitments, because I know there's going to be a second agreement after, that follows after today's meeting. But I'll leave it to your discretion.
Well, so do you have a copy of the letter?
I don't have a copy of it with me right now.
Okay, well, we, we need to get this letter signed today, so I guess.
Could, we still have some items on the agenda. Could you possibly work with my net and have those changes made that we might be able to approve the copy by the end of the agenda?
I can step out and see what I can do, but I need to be present for items N through P.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we're going to hold this item. Item I, the ratification of the grant notice from NEMA.
5I is ratification of grant adjustment notice from NEMA to Lancaster County, increasing the amount of the 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant from $175,561.45 to $199,376.4.
Good morning. Jim David, Saber Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. I was here a few weeks ago for round one of this EMPG reallocation when we were able to secure an additional $47,000 in funding. That was round one. Round two comes about if counties don't comply with the state's necessary guidelines to apply, or deadlines, excuse me, to apply for the funds that may be available for reallocation. So I want to commend my planning specialist, Patty Talamonte. She is very keen on those deadlines and when and what needs to be submitted to qualify for us. So again, this is round two, which will secure us an additional $23,814. That's the good news. The bad news is I do not anticipate a round three, that the money that is available for this EMPG that ran the 2016 fiscal year, this should be the end of the funds, but as I said, we should be very well positioned moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. David Saber?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to ratify the grant adjustment notice from NEMA to Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is an agreement between the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force Program in Lancaster County at the request of Lancaster County Sheriff to assist OCD ETF in the Interdiction Initiative. The county should be reimbursed up to $36,000 in overtime costs for work from October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force to assist with the interdiction initiative. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a professional services contract between Move Creative and Lancaster County for Lancaster County Extension to provide website production and maintenance. Term of contract starts from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. The cost to county is $3,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the professional services contract with Move Creative to provide website production and maintenance. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L are contracts with the following, provide the annual supply of guard and maintenance staff clothing for county corrections. Terms of contracts are four years from the date of execution. This includes Don's Pioneer uniforms in an amount not to exceed $30,000, and Gaul's LLC in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a couple seconds for contracts, for two contracts, to provide the annual supply of guard and maintenance staff clothing for the County Corrections Department. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an amendment to county contract C-14-579 with Navia Benefit Solutions for Flexible Spending Plan. The amendment renew the contract from November 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $9,500.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Navia Benefit Solutions for Flexible Spending Account, I'm sorry, for Flexible, the Flexible Spending Plan. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5N are amendments to the following, provide the annual requirements of motor grader snow removal services for Lancaster County. The amendments renew the contracts from November 17th, 2017 through November 16th, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $45,000, and this includes Gana Trucking and Excavating and K2 Construction.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So last week, while I was at a class receiving my winter maintenance certificate, one of the topics of the class was resiliency and making a backup for your systems should some catastrophic event happen with snow or maybe sickness on your staff. And so this contract is to do just exactly that, and it's to provide backup should we, for some reason, not have enough motor graders or have excessive snow. There's also the, the hard reality that since I've been in office, we haven't actually put the V plows on the motor graders and use them, which means we haven't had significant snow in almost four years. And so I'm hoping that I can make it five years with that, but if I don't, this is a plan to back that up.
Any questions for Ms. Dingman? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend two contracts for the annual requirements of motor grates, snow removal services for the county. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department and the County Engineer to award purchase orders to RL Team and Construction, Lyman Ritchie Corporation, Beal Trucking, Inc., and West Silver Rock Sand and Sand, Inc., for the supply and hauling of gravel surface course material to Lancaster County stockpiles. The total amount is $560,997.50.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So as you're aware, we buy rock in the spring and gravel in the fall, and so we have nine different locations that we truck it to. Several years ago, in order to be more friendly to small business and give small business a better opportunity at these, we decided to go with whoever had the lowest trucking bid on the individual pile. And so that is why you see this number of contractors involved, and which I think is good for our community, and so I recommend approval on this.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from the Purchasing Department and the County Engineer toward the purchase orders for the supply and hauling of gravel surface course materials to the county stockpiles. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5P is a professional services contract with JEO Consulting Group, Inc., for professional engineering services for the inspection of fracture-critical Bridge H120. Work is to be completed before January 5th, 2018. The cost to county is $3,500.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The exhibit that I've put on the overhead shows the location of this bridge on North 176th Street in between Waverly and Bluff Road. Of course, we have talked about this bridge many times. This is the Tress Bridge that we bought from Department of Roads in 1932 and then relocated to this location in, in the 1960s. Now that we have finished bank stabilization on this bridge, unfortunately, while the bridge was closed and the construction was being done, the Department of Roads went ahead and did all of their fracture-critical bridge inspections, but since this bridge was closed, they refused to inspect this bridge. So now that the construction is complete, except for some gravel that needs to be placed on the north side of the bridge, I can't open the bridge because it doesn't have its annual fracture-critical inspection. So this is a contract to go ahead and get that inspection done so that we can get that bridge back open.
Well, and I see a neighbor of the bridge in the audience, Ms. Brown. So as far as timing goes, I know it says the work is to be completed by January 5th. I mean, when do you anticipate the inspection?
We anticipate them still inspecting this bridge this week, and so that we can get it back open as quickly as possible. This has been a bit of a snag that we didn't anticipate. Of course, they couldn't inspect the bridge till they were complete with construction, and then, you know, so the waiting period to get this open, I know, has been painful to the adjacent residents, especially as harvest approaches. So we're trying to get the inspection completed as quickly as possible.
But I guess, wouldn't an inspection be, take place immediately following the completion of construction? I mean, or does this, I mean, wouldn't that have, I guess, I guess there's redundancy in this process?
We had hoped that we could get the state to inspect, and you may be aware, I believe in August is typically when you approve. We have an annual agreement with the state, and the state actually hires the inspection of all fracture-critical bridges. And so we had hoped that we could get this bridge in with that group of inspections, and we were not able to. So we haven't done two inspections, but now that it's complete, we'll do our annual inspection, and then we'll inspect it again next year.
Any other questions for Ms. Stigman?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the professional services contract with JEO Consulting for the professional engineering services for the inspection of a fracture-critical bridge H120. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Clerk, may we revisit item number H?
Sure. Would you like me to read it again?
Well, this is a letter of support for the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners for the South Beltway.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. What we have done is we have modified the paragraph after the bullet points to state we have agreed to participate in the project by making the changes in the county road network to accommodate the project and to make the South Beltway a reality. First sentence only.
Okay. Any discussion?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to sign the letter of support from the Board of Commissioners for the South Beltway. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, back to the regular agenda. Item number Q.
They had a motion and a second. There's time.
Do we need to do anything?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. That was my motion.
Who had the motion on the...
Why don't I just withdraw that?
Okay. So for the record, the original motion and second earlier was withdrawn by the motioner, Commissioner Avery, and the secondor, Commissioner Amundson.
Next is five Q, and this is a grant contract with Volunteer Link in the amount of $8,000 for the youth volunteer program. The contract is funded by the Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. And this morning, we have the honor of having Dan Bowerley with us from Volunteer Link. He is the volunteer coordinator that meets with all of our kids in diversion and helps them find community service projects within our community in Lancaster County.
Thank you. Good morning, yeah, I'm Dan Bowerley with Volunteer Link, and I work with youth in the community that have come... Have been given a law violation, either on probation or diversion, and receive direct referrals from the... From either the probation office or the diversion office, and ideally like to meet with the youth in person if it's convenient. Otherwise, just do it and take over the phone. But I work to set up and line up community service projects and volunteer work for the youth so that they are successful in completing their community service requirement, try to address all the issues that may prevent them from finding volunteer work. A lot of nonprofit agencies are reluctant or flat-out refuse to accept youth, or especially youth that are... Have received a law violation on probation or diversion. So work to address those barriers and the logistics and make it as easy as possible for them to successfully complete their community service requirement so they can get off their probation and diversion assignment. So I also work with the high school students on an informal basis, just working with random referrals and phone calls, kids that need their 20 hours of community service to graduate high school so that they can get their government politic hours to finish their high school requirement there so they can graduate. So just a resource there to help with the youth in the community find volunteer opportunities.
Thank you. Questions?
Dan, what's a typical placement for youth? You probably have two or three large nonprofits that kids work with.
Certainly, yeah. There are... A very common one is Food Net Distribution Sites. They're the nice... They are very willing to accept the youth, the volunteers that I send them. I have contacts there that I've developed good relationships with. There are thrift stores throughout the community that are very willing to accept these volunteers as well, along with the bigger agencies, the Center for People in Need, the People's City Mission, Matt Talbot Kitchen at times. So we have Volunteer Link in general. We have a website with very... Quite a few volunteer opportunities. We have hundreds of nonprofit agencies that have accounts on our website that list their volunteer needs, so we have a lot of opportunities to pull for there and a lot of contacts to work with, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, otherwise, entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Volunteer Link for the youth volunteer program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is a contract with consultants in gastroenterology for specialized care of general assistance clients. Providers will be reimbursed at the Medicaid rate.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. And while I don't have anything per se on this contract, I just want to remind everybody they should have gotten an email from me about Project Homeless Connect, and our general assistance office will be having a booth there. It is October 11th. That's a Wednesday. There's a special time for elected officials to go at 1:15, and you'll be provided a tour and then a briefing of what Project Homeless Connect is. It's at Pinnacle Bank Arena. Last year, they served close to 500 homeless individuals right there. So if you're able to come, let us know, let Jenny know, and we'll get you lined up with the registration and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval of item Q or R, sorry. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with consultants in gastroenterology for the specialized care of general assistance clients. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number six, a consent item. This is utility number 1588, allowing North Public Power District to replace existing power line adjacent to Northwest 105th Street from West Fletcher Road to Nebraska Highway